Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
We will call this work session to order and thank you for being here this morning. Public comment, and we have public comments this morning?
Yes, everyone has three people's on there.
All right. We respect our citizens' rights to express their opinions. However, I intend to enforce our three-minute rule this morning, so please be aware. Once you reach your three minutes, I will politely ask you to please wrap your sentence up and the floor will be taken back by me. Please avoid campaigning or personal attacks against personnel or officials which should be handled in another forum other than the body of this such. Next, the first person on the list is Mr. Jack Baggett, and I believe Wanda Spires. Mr. Jack Baggett, please come to the podium, please, and state your name again and your address.
I thought I was third.
Oh, you did, but no, you're first today. You're first.
I'm here at Impairity Mochee, y'all know that. I'm here about a problem with an employee and also about a building permit. James Wordington said that the shit on my property out there, and I got five witnesses to say that we will issue a permit on that building been started when I had a heart attack and I quit building. And every time he told us, we'd come up and get a permit. My son went up out to get a permit and wanted to verify this. There's five people sat in there. He did say he'd issue a permit. Raise your hand if he did. And then he turned around and said we had to get another site plan. Now, that's three site plans. I fought this country against dictatorship, and I see it right here. All right, and then he said I had to hire a contractor. I'm licensed anywhere in the state of Georgia, that's a federal law, I'm a death veteran, and my son been a builder too. So, we hired a contractor, and it cost us about $10,000. All right, he went down there and they sat down with him, and this contractor had to sign the foundation and all was okay. So, we did that. I'm not here to cause any trouble, I'm very hurt and disappointed. The man signed it. So, my son ordered the pre-engineer steel buildings are pre-approved. That building is sitting in that warehouse costing us money. Now, if we bring that building out there and put it on the ground, the state of thieves will steal it. And it's sad that we live in the county. I've been here all my life, I built buildings probably 50, and I've never had this kind of problem. And it makes me so upset that I can't say, I'm 84 years old, I'm legally a death veteran, and I fought against dictatorship. One starts something, the other then follows up. This ain't right. But what do you do when a man does what, a paid employee does what he wants to with no control? If he don't have a reason, he makes up a reason. And I won't disinvestigate it, and I won't quit till it is. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Baggett. We'll take this matter under advisement, and I will ask our county administrator and director.
Well, you're biggest liar I ever seen.
All right. Next, we have on the list is Mr. Wanda Spire, so are you speaking? Spires? Is Wanda Spires here? Spires? Please give us your name again and your address, Ms. Spires.
Okay. Wanda Spires, 8570 Andy Mountain Court, Billerica, Georgia.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here as a friend of the family, and we have been waiting over two weeks.
The friend of the family of?
Ma'am.
Friend of the family of Mr. Baggett?
Mr. Baggett's family.
Okay.
They have been having problems trying to get this building up. They've ordered the building, now they're having to pay rent to store the building. We've got a letter that was okay the driveway, 2001, where it was approved. We've got five buildings on that property, and now we can't do anything till the DOT approves it. And we've got a letter saying the driveway is approved. So, all we need now is to get the DOT to approve the driveway so we can get a building permit, so they won't have to keep paying rent on a building that they've ordered. And the people are telling him, if he don't get things together, that they're not going to build the building, he's done paid them. So, he's losing all the way around, and I appreciate y'all listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Spires. We'll take this matter under advisement. And last but not least, we have Mr. Larry Pierce. Mr. Pierce, please come forward and state your address and your subject matter. Today is good and bad. Is that your subject matter? Just give us your address again, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow councilmen. Name's Larry Pierce, 4120 Van Sant Road, Douglasville, Georgia. Well, I put down good and bad because the good is, I'm not talking about the corner. The bad is, I want to speak with a forked tongue. I know we've all heard that growing up, but the forked tongue is actually to help you. I'm here to speak for the Board of Commissioners to understand what's going on on number four, which will be tomorrow night, okay? Now, I don't know, very few people get concerned, or give a hoot, as they say, if they don't live in an area where the bees are swarming. But it just so happens, I have a friend that's going to manufacture something for me and hire him. So, the past two weeks, I deliberately went one way and I went another way. Now, what the people are going to be raising cane tomorrow night about is the route in which Mr. Valentine and Georgia DOT said, "Let's go." Now, there's things that were not mentioned, and I assure you, when I drive my van, I notice them. So, if you go up here to Burnt Hickory, the road that goes parallel to the graystone, cross over the tracks, go through the industrial intersection, go to the next one, you meander on out, cross the bridge, and you finally get to Brownsville Road. Now, Brownsville Road, you have a determination to make. If you go right, you go into Potter Springs. If you go left, you can meander around, and it dead-ends into 92 by the grocery store. But if you go straight across into Paulding County, it's a well-traveled road. Go on around, follow it on around, and there's only one major stop sign, that's a three-way stop sign in front of Travis Tritt's Corner Property. You can tell his property because the chain-link fence for him is black for a mile and then it turns to the right. Now, what the people are going to fuss about is two things, and I went both directions. It takes exactly 15 minutes to come from the grocery store to Graystone, hitting 78. It takes about 20 minutes if you go Travis Tritt, it's a little longer, but you can go faster, and there's hardly any hills. Now, the hills and the whippy-doo's and all this, and the subdivisions and the roads coming out into the road, is from the grocery store route coming around on Burnt Hickory. So, this is what you've got to consider. What the people are fussing about, semi-trucks and all coming down a certain road. And if you think truck drivers or semi-drivers, pay attention to signs, "Come out and sit on my swing on Van Sant Road," and see how many cut through Van Sant Road instead of going to the end of the road. Doesn't matter. So, as I said before, if you've got to hire an off-duty, give a few tickets or $300, which isn't much, because if you park in a handicapped place, guess how much it costs? $500 to get around real quick. So, I know many of you hear these things, but if you really go out and drive it and pay attention where you slow down, coming around curves, how many driveways you pass, that's what they're concerned about. They know it's got to happen, we know it's got to happen, we know it's a time limit on it, and Mr. Valentine probably just cooperated with Georgia DOT because, you know, there's things you cooperate with. And nothing happens until somebody says, "Whoa." So, I just want to let you know, I'm not involved in it, I don't live there, but I go to hire them quite frequently because a friend of mine has a business there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. We'll take this matter under advisement for tomorrow. Next, we have a presentation from Mitch Plast, our day commissioner.
May I make an announcement?
Yes.
Many of you know Chaplain Gary McManus over at the jail. He's had a massive heart attack, and he's on my support. So, y'all please pray for him, pray for whoever has to take his place over there, because they've got big shoes to leave. Thank you. That's my prayers.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Members of the board. My name's Terry Gable, I'm with Moreland House Bailey. And Rich has asked me to sit in today. He had some things come up and couldn't make it, so I'll be doing the market report today. Hopefully, I'll get through it. If I go too quick, if you need to stop me and ask questions as we go through some of the projects, feel free to do that. So, with that, I'll move forward. So, this report is reporting on the January collections.
You're not in the camera side. Go to the podium. Very good. Very good.
Very good, thank you. So, this report's reporting on the January splosh collections and also the status of the projects through February. You've seen this same slide before. This is just reporting on the program costs for each department. Stand basically about the same, $31 million for fire, $17 million for parks and wrecks, and $30 million for transportation. The transportation is down because right now, that's not the full budget for it, but we still have projects that are, we still have funds that are in buckets, and once we get those assigned, you'll see that move up. Through February, we spent about $4.5 million total for the program, so it's going very well. You're going to see that pick up as we go into the close of the first splosh year. We've got some invoices that'll still come in, so that cost will go up. The next three slides are just kind of an overview for each program. For fire, we're at about a half a million dollars. We're expecting that to go up towards the end of March. The chief still has some fire trucks that I think that are in, but we're still waiting on the invoices. Transportation, about $2.9 million, the majority of that was the resurfacing for 2017, and then with parks and wrecks at about $150,000. So, it's kind of stayed the same, and we expect that to go up just a little bit, too. As far as the collections for January is about $1.9 million. We were expecting that to go down some, obviously from December for sure, and the average is about $1.978 million for the first 10 months, which is pretty good for the program. Hopefully, as we move into 2018, things will continue to pick up a little bit, but right now, it's really looking pretty good. This is just a graphic of the same information. You can see with December, jumped out pretty good, and then, of course, we fell back with January, which wouldn't that not be unexpected. So, there was about a 22% change from December to January. The total for April to January was about $19.5 million. The 10-month, compare that to the 10-month projection, was about $19.9 million. So, you've got about a $41,000 shortfall, which isn't that bad. Again, as we move into 2018, hopefully, that'll stabilize and if anything, pick up. Bond service and payment obligations, we're about to make the bigger payments for 2017, which will bring it up to $9.9 million for the 2017 payment, and as we move into the splosh year 2018. So, now, I'll go into some of the project updates. The radio system, I was in a meeting, I think March 8th, with the chief and the city. Motorola, as March 8th was actually the notice-to-proceed date, but they hit the ground running. It was a very long meeting, about four hours, very detailed and high-level. They did a good job. I think we're going to be real impressed with the progress that they're making. They went through in detail about the equipment. How it was all going to be laid out, the towers, locations of civil sites, and what they were going to be doing for each one. So, we should be seeing some progress with Motorola pretty quick. We've got an October 19th completion date on it today. So, the AMAS, the chief bought one AMAS in 2017. It's in and should be in service. If it's not, it will be very soon. Both fire trucks, the pumper truck and the ladder truck are in. I think the pumper truck is still in water and with some minor touches, I think on the paint, but the ladder truck hopefully is, will be in display hopefully this month. Station 3 renovations, that's the one we bid out, and the bids came in high. We have recently met with the review committee, met with the architect. We're doing some value engineering on the plans, we helped to bring the cost down some. We looked at the specs and we've tried to improve any confusion we think may have been in the specs for the bidders, and we're going to put that back out on the street hopefully very soon, and if we need to, we'll probably end up having to increase the budget, but we plan on moving forward with that very soon. Fire station signage is basically complete, some of it's still in fabrication, but Scott Chaverson is pretty much complete. And with that, we're moving into transportation. The 2017 resurfacing program is basically done. They finished up the punch list first part of the year, so we'll be moving into the 2018 list. I think Miguel and his staff is working with the transportation to get that approved. We hope that'll be done soon because we do need to get that on the street as soon as we can. The street lights on Riverside is moving very well. They're over halfway, they're right at the Sweetwater Creek Bridge, I think. We show a March completion date on it, I don't think they're going to make that, but it's a long road, it's about 5.5 miles long. I don't expect, as far as I know, they haven't ran into any other issues, it's just a matter of them keeping pushing it and getting the cable set and the poles up. The Lee Road Extension, as far as I know, is on schedule with a June completion date. I think Miguel has a staff meeting next week with them. Hopefully, we'll get a little more detail on how that's going. Rock House Road Traffic Signal, that project, considering it started in basically the winter, has went very well. The roadway's complete, roadway works complete on it. They've got the poles up and the mast arms are up. They're pulling wire now for the cabinet, and we should see some signals head being hung hopefully by the end of, or the first week of April. Once that's done, we'll get power on it and start the 30-day burn in April and hopefully have that project done somewhere in May. Stewart Mill Road, we have finally gotten a draft agreement that Miguel's working on now with the Jacobs to move forward with the design on that project. We've still got some things that we're going to need to get from them. I'm looking at it probably about a May 1st, and notice-to-proceed, hopefully, we can, once we get that, Miguel gets the agreement done, we can get that to you for approval, review, and approval. We got an August 2019 completion date on it. If we can get the design to probably, if we can get it started in May, the design should finish up towards the end of the year and get it under construction. Watch right-of-way's purchase and get it under construction first of the 2019. Bright Star and John West Road and Chapel Hill were both lit contract with Southeast Engineering, and they're making good progress. Miguel and I met with them about two weeks ago before kickoff meeting. They should have John West, they started on it first. They should have the plans completed around June for John West, and then around October for Chapel Hill. So, both projects moving well, and Nessie I was doing a good job on the design of it. And for John West, we're showing an August completion date of next year, which should be about on track considering with right-of-way purchases and finalizing the design on it. Sweetwater Church Road, we're still working, Miguel's working pretty much one-on-one with Paulding County. You know, they had to go back, and Miguel, I think, said now that Paulding County's back trying to do some revisions on the plans to try to minimize impact for the two parcels that we were having some problems with. So, it's finally moving forward, I think. Miguel thinks that's going to start moving forward once we get those plans completed and Miguel and his staff can get the signal designed. Hopefully, we can get that project on the street, and we've shown a January completion date, and hopefully, we can still meet that. There's Chapel Hill Road Intersection, which I said, hopefully, the design will be wrapping up around first of the fall, September, October there. Lithia Springs, these next three are the sidewalk projects. We're going to put those out for bid this week, they'll be advertised. You know, that's the one we went back, we bid it out, didn't get any proposals on it, and we've done, we went out, did some evaluations on the sites, felt like it was a little bit much. Each site had some drainage work that was going to need to be designed, and so we felt like we wouldn't really be able to approach that job without plans, so we're going to put it back out on the street for design services, and it'll be advertised this week. Going through that process, we did make some good contacts with some local vendors, and we're going to make sure that those folks are contacted when we do get it out on the street. So, I feel pretty comfortable that we'll get some proposals on this when we come back. Equipment-wise, Miguel's pretty much got the equipment he's got for 2017. I think he's waiting on a couple pickups, and he'll be set for 2017. We're moving to Gary's Parks and Wrecks. Boundger Waters Restroom, that project's moving along very well. Carter Watkins is designing it, it's about 90% complete, so we're going to be very close of letting that project, the concession stand, out for construction very soon. And that project's partnering up with the soccer field lights. Once we get the concession stand bid out, we'll have a little bit better idea on our budget. This is the one that, between the soccer field light, the bids we got for it, and the concession stand, we feel like we're going to be within budget. It's going to be close, but we did want to get it out to bid to make sure we wouldn't get called any supply. Dear Lick Park Tennis Courts, we took bids, proposals on that last week for design services. We did get two proposals this time, so those will be reviewed, evaluated, and reviewed. We'll have those to you for hopefully approval next month. Multi-purpose rec center, the recommendation for award on this architect is, you'll be approving on it this month. And then the senior center, we've done the evaluations on it, and it'll be following that hopefully next month, we'll have a recommendation for an architect on the senior These next two is Bill Orf and Fair Play. We've got both of those under design, and they're moving a little bit slow, but they're just getting started. It should move along very well. We've seen some preliminary plans on it already. We're doing the concession stands at both parks, if you remember, and also doing all the fencing for both parks, but it's moving along very well. We do show a completion date of June 19th on that. The same with Gear, I think he's got most of his equipment in, maybe expecting one pickup. Again, we're wrapping everything up for this splosh year, which should be about there where everything he was expecting. Our program management expenses, we've wrapped up, I think, our 2017, and we've got an agreement with Bill's office for 2018, so I think all that's in the works now. We'll be moving forward and looking forward to continuing to program through 2018. So, that's the last of the dash report on the project, specific project updates. These next couple of slides, you know, we're tracking this now for partners, local partners within Douglas County, trying to keep percentages and be reporting that to you either monthly or semi-monthly as this changes so that we at least know where we stand, and you guys would know kind of areas we need to improve in, and we're working with, of course, with county staff on doing that. But we're still right around 45 vendors. 14 of those are in Douglas County and about 15 are outside, within 30 miles of Douglas County. So, that's good. If you totaled up, the percentage-wise of the number of vendors, it's about 64% that are within 30 miles of Douglas County. So, that's a pretty good number, but the invoices paid out is, right now, is still low for the vendors that are within Douglas County. The big thing about that one that skews it is C.W. Matthews, which is within 30 miles, but that, you know, they had the resurfacing contract which kicked that percentage up. But we'll keep monitoring it, keep tracking it and reporting it, and again, working with staff to try to get this out and advertise it and make sure the locals are aware of the projects. With that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners or Commissioner Rock? Question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick questions, and maybe just for a point. As relates to the spend of the projects, you mentioned something about $41,000 short. Remind me what that number was again?
That was a shortfall, the average of the first 10 months.
Yep. That's the average.
Yeah.
All right. And so, one of the things we're trying to emphasize as we go into this, you know, this full year, is to keep track of, you know, the shortfall, and I'm going to look for my director to sort of weigh in on that. Two things, one, we do anticipate, maybe there's an assumption that the economy is healing and whole for the most part. We've got a report from our University of West Georgia, Dr. Joyce Smith, that says that at least West Georgia's out of recession for the past two years. Great. That means the income is stable, right? Perhaps it'll grow a little bit. With it growing, that means people are going to be spending a little bit more, either offline or online, and I guess my question is, what do we anticipate? Because again, and I've looked at one more year, we experience one more year of the loss dropping before it stabilizes, or are we already into that, Director Hall?
I don't know if I followed your question, I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, absolutely. Do we anticipate our loss negotiations?
We're lost.
Of option sales tax. Do we have one more year, it's shrinking because of our SDS, I mean, because of our relationship with the?
This is the final year, from last year to this year, and then from 2018 through 2022 for 21, I think it's 2022. It will remain.
Five straight years of stableness.
Yes.
All right. So, I guess my question is, how are we, do we anticipate, or do we have a reserve that will make up for that shortfall, or are we just sort of going along with it? And again, I'm just asking this question. I just, I got to keep driving home to this point because we're only forecasting, we're only sort of speculating what we think will happen.
Right.
And so, the point is, and this is new for you to hear this, but to hear it from her directly, we're sensitive that we programmed a certain amount and we optimized to spend, but because we don't have control of the macro environment, it's sort of like you need to, you know, like a reserve or anything else. And so, I guess, I mean, how are we tracking that? It's more of an open question. How are we tracking that?
Well, I mean, I know Rich and Jennifer working very close to make sure we got a reserve built into the balance of, and we're checking very close as far as the projects that are, that we know when they're going to be built, and at least in 2018 and further out, so, and just make sure we maintain a reserve based on pay-go money and funds that are coming in.
Are we actually maintaining it, or we just, we've got it on our report? Our software is showing us, you know, actual versus, you know, budgeted, but is that money somewhere? I mean, is somebody actually saying, "Okay, we're not going to spend this"? It's one thing to say it, it's another to say, "Are we allocated"? I won't say allocate, that's the wrong word, but I think you get the spirit of what I'm saying is that I just don't want to miss this.
Not just to pay, and Jennifer might can weigh in on that, but yeah, that's the full intentions, is to have the funds there in the bank that we know we're not going to spend, just to have a backup. Just to have a backup, you know, depending on what the SLOSS revenues do over the next, course of the next year.
Ten for you.
You know, right now, we're spending, drawing down on bond proceeds only. And then the pay-go money that we get after the bond debt service for the bond year is fully funded, then we get what we call pay-go money. That's going in a separate bank account and we're not drawing down on those funds. We're letting those funds set aside and only pull down on the bond proceeds. But even after, you know, we worked with Rich and he's kind of scheduled out all the projects, you know, it's going to, you know, year three and four is going to be pretty tight because we have a very large debt service payment. And those years compared to what the SLOSS comes in, it's going to take 10 to 11 months to fund the debt service. So those years, we're looking at it preliminary right now, but it looks like that there's going to be some projects that may, we may have to slow down a little bit or that, you know, postpone until year five and six that we have the funds available to proceed with them.
That's my point, which is we have nothing to prove to the public other than to do right. We don't need to put ourselves in a precarious position where we're trying to burn, 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 spin, spin, spin. And I appreciate you stating what you're saying. So I guess my question is, we have what's on the list and what's at the bottom of the list. And I guess the last time we were here, and this is more of a question, which was, do you have the capacity within your software to show us that these are green projects? They're absolutely good to go. Then there's those yellow projects that are sort of at the top of the bottom of the list and at the top of the bottom of the list, you know, sort of in between and we know things that are red that we're totally, we're just not going to get to. Is there a way that we can begin to, I mean, we're having this conversation two years before, years four, three and four, we said we know it's going to form file when we say it's going to be tight. How are we going to track that? And you know, versus, how do you show that you actually know what project's going to get sacrificed? Because then we as elected officials can set expectations of the public and within ourselves that says, this might not make it, guys. I know we said we wanted to go do this, but the reality is that you can't blow the butt, you just can't spend and just be spending just to prove something. And I think the spirit of the SLOSS was to do improvements, do operations in such a way to sort of, you know, move things along, but there's a, I'm probably more conservative in this area. And I'll leave that as my last question, can you, somebody answer, how do we?
Well, I think last, the last couple of meetings we've had, and we had one big budget meeting about SLOSS, which I know Jennifer's been involved in that too. But based on the current projections, we're not going to reach, at this moment, we're not going to reach any projects below the line. Below the line where we thought, okay, here's the line. These are possible projects that we can get to if revenues come in more than expected. So right now, we're not going to be able to reach anything below the line currently. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, based on revenues and based on some of these projects coming in under budget, hopefully, that couldn't change. And it depends on these categories, these categories figured separately.
And it also means that even the ones above the line, maybe if they were originally programmed to start in year three, we may have to bump that to year four or year five because of the cash flow.
Right.
And they'll still be done in order, they just may be pushed back a little, so depending on cash flow.
Right. That's all we're trying to do is have the conversations, so it's not a shock at the end and just for our peers, so that we know that certain things that are on there that we might have had certain constituents or basic people that were expecting something, but we've got to be honest and real about where things stand. So that's all I wanted to bring out, Madam Chair, one of you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Moakew.
It's all about, you know, staying within your means and working to your projections and within your priorities. Having said that, Douglas County has been fortunate in having some very significant investments in our county. Several very large data centers, which will generate tax revenues. Is it implausible to think that the income tax revenue, non-residential tax revenue coming from these data centers will enable us to complete everything that's above the line? In other words, already prioritized and possibly some things below the line. Now, they asked you to look at the crystal ball, Jennifer, I appreciate that. But let's not ignore the fact that we've got some significant investments in our county. So is that going to give us some leeway that we're not counting on right at this minute?
Absolutely. It's definitely additional funding source that is going to be coming down the pipeline as early as 2020. I think that we can see the major hit to the digest.
Okay, and we're not projecting anything of that sort right now, premature?
Correct, yes.
I'll go back.
Yes, just a couple, the sidewalk projects. Can you speak to that once more to make sure I kind of heard what you said about what we are? Because I think you went back out to bid, from my understanding of what you stated, it's going to cost us a little bit more based on some drainage issues and some other things that you guys are kind of encountering.
Yes, so when we first put it out, you know, we didn't get any bidders on it. And then we went out and done in-house, we done some field evaluation, just look at it to make sure that we could and take sections of it and possibly go straight, just bid out for construction. And we talked to some local vendors and, but once we got to look at them in more detail, all of them had some sort of design work that was going to be needed. So we finally made a decision and then talking to some of the local vendors too, that it would be best just to put it out for Design Services, which will be advertised this week. I think it runs Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. And then of course, it'll propose to be due in 30 days. So that's the goal right now is to put it back out on the street. And I think I've had enough conversations and Miguel has too with some of the local vendors. And I feel pretty sure we're going to get the proposals we were looking for the first time. And this will just be for Design Services, it won't be for construction.
Right, and so you think with that, you'll be within the price point what we're trying to deal with? Because I think that we're trying to, you know, because everybody, we're thinking that it will cost more doing it this way, I guess. I don't know, you guys tell me.
Well, I, what we're doing now would have had to been done regardless. I think we were thinking if we could have picked out some sections, maybe that didn't have to have the curve, didn't have to have the curb and gutter and drainage, that you probably could have got a little lower cost on those and possibly have picked up some smaller contractors, construction contractors. But when we started looking at holistically, we just realized we weren't going to be able to do that. It was, they're going to have to be bid out, if not all three of them together, individual projects and not break out any sections, but do them, do the whole things. I don't necessarily think what the cost is going to come in is just what it's going to be. Because everything they'll, the designers are going to end up, the items we're going to end up in that contract are going, we're going to have to have them. I think we got, I think I got a pretty good idea on budget for them. And I think it'll fall, it'll fall within, I think that'll fall within the budget that we currently have in the, for those three schools and the projects and what we got.
So it's going to still fall in budget?
Yeah, you know, and one thing about where the sidewalks are, you know, they're under that, they're under the bucket that we don't have a lot of cost on either. So that's the areas we're still trying to refine and get cost. The bridges was up under there also that DOT is doing. So we got, we got, you know, that's obviously going to come into play at some point.
Right.
But I don't, I don't see with the Design Services that we're going to get with what they're going to come up with, I don't really see any big unknowns that, you know, that we didn't know that we were going into with these sidewalk projects.
Okay, okay. And the senior citizen center, you spoke a little bit about that, kind of, from what, we don't have anything yet or where we are at this point in time, will it fit or we haven't bid for P and E yet or I mean?
No, so we're, where we're at with the senior centers, we have taken bids on it for Design Services. The proposals have been evaluated. We're very close to making a recommendation, it just won't be this month. Bill, is that correct?
That's true. We don't have a recommendation made at the next, Commissioner, ready for the next.
And what you can share with us, I mean, what, at the level you can share, is it promising or is it?
Yes, yes.
Should be overly concerned?
No, we're fine. Well, no, with the, with the cost of the A and E, the architecture, the engineering, we don't have anything yet on the construction. This is just the design.
Put that part of this in line.
It is.
And everything else probably will be somewhat placed to be made to go in line, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, all right. Thank you again, and I must say, continued job well done. I mean, and thanks for these updates, I think these are really great. And how's our program community manager, you know, I guess we'll hear from him later on, I guess, Madam Chair or something? Okay, all right, I'll go back.
Commissioner Hager?
Yes, under Fire and EMS, the radio system has come in way under budget. So there's extra money there to apply to the station three, fire station, I would hope.
Well, I'll let Bill answer that, but I think those funds, because of the nature of the, of the factors that brought that, that did, there were some savings in it, I think that money's going to be held because we're not really sure as we move through this radio system, Bill, is that correct? That we may not, all of them may not come fruition. So we, I don't think that money, we're going to be able to allow that money to...
But some of it probably could be used because of what, half a million of better savings on the...
And I...
And there's some other money in renovations too. We just, I mean, they just had a set amount of $2 million for renovations. So as soon as we get the final price on station three, then we'll make a recommendation or we'll come to the Fire and EMS committee and then back to the board and the recommendation whether those funds are coming.
And I understand there's a lot more renovation needed there because it is the oldest one in the county, so.
So, you know, based on our original estimate, and it's going to be higher than that in the estimate that we first looked at, I think we know that now. We just want to make sure that the bids we're getting, that everybody's comfortable with them and we're getting what we're paying for and that some of the reasons wasn't because the contractors weren't exactly sure about what Douglas County wanted to be done. That's why we're going to have, we're going to have a pre-bid meeting this time, a mandatory pre-bid meeting to make sure that they know exactly what we're asking for and make sure there's no confusion in the plans. And then we're going to go back out for bid and hopefully, we'll be able to award the low bid on this next go-around.
I used to work for general contractors and I know that bids sometimes are, there's errors in them and everything, but this is quite a bit of an error. So anyway, I'll go back.
Okay, I'll tell you, last but not least, I just have one comment regarding savings as well. I'm quite sure Commissioner Guida will, if we will, this. Is there savings with the Post Road Bridge as well? Would that be a savings as well?
Yeah, and it's in, obviously, it's in, that's in transportation. But yeah, that's, I'm in Communications, GDOT, you know, as far as Douglas County's responsibilities, it's just to do some basic things, no financial obligations to it. So that, all the money that was budgeted for that bridge, it'll be within the, whatever we decide to do with it as far as transportation.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you so much, Mr. Gay.
Thank you.
Next, you have the approval of the minutes. I encourage you, Board of Commissioners, to just review your minutes tomorrow so you're prepared to approve tomorrow. Next, we have a public hearing tomorrow, which is tab number four. The public hearing is for the purpose of considering amending section 14-72C of the County Code of Ordinances relating to the zones prohibiting trucks with more than six wheels to remove or roads from the list to establish a truck and passenger vehicle detour route due to the closure of Mosley Street Railroad Crossing. Director Valentine, please bring us up this fee. This item is table from February 20th.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner. This item, at the last meeting, there was a request for additional outreach to the public. We had a public meeting over at the Transportation Center last week to allow those residents along the second option detour route to have, to be able to look at the client, look at the maps, look at the routes and have some public input. However, we did not get very many residents who came out to that particular meeting. So either they're more comfortable with the detour being along Malone or some other reason, but in any event, we afforded the opportunity to those residents to have input as well. They may be at the hearing tomorrow, that might be another possibility. But essentially, how we came about setting those detour routes was there were preliminarily, there were meetings between the city, the county and the Georgia DOT to discuss the situation. And the original route discussed was the Malone Route, Industrial Access and Municipal, Municipal Access, Industrial Access Road. And as a result of that meeting, there was a suggestion to use the Maroni Mill and North Burn Hickory, particularly because there were traffic signals at both ends of those roads. So that was one of the main reasons for that second option to come about. Both of them were discussed thoroughly with the city and the Georgia DOT and the county. And so those are the two options on the table. There's been other routes discussed, thrown out, suggested. In fact, the Georgia DOT had to, because of the timing of the closure of railroad crossing, had to designate an official detour route, which they did. And they put all the traffic on state routes because those are the routes that they have jurisdiction. So in order for there to be a local route, the local agency has to approve. And in the case of Malone and Industrial Access, the city has exposure or borders most of those roads. Now, the city has indicated that they are in support of that road if that is selected by the county as well. So that's what's going to be before you tomorrow. I would anticipate that there will be public input, as we probably had last time. There might be some additional folks from along Malone perhaps. But essentially, the reason for the public hearing is that we would have to, the county would have to amend the ordinance to remove either Huey Road, in the case of Malone, or Maroni Mill, in the case of the Maroni Mill-North Burn Hickory routes, because they are currently restricted by ordinance so that there would be no trucks over six wheels on those routes. Now, along Huey, particularly, there's a section, I guess, between Industrial Access and Malone. It is just that section that would need to be removed from the list, not the entire length of Huey Road. So that's what you will have before you tomorrow. I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Guida?
Yes, Miguel, in Huey Road already being used by the oil company right there for trucks?
Yes.
What is it, why is there not standing trucks for that without the city approval? Because they're already doing it.
Well, because there is, the restriction against trucks following a particular route is only if they do not have a delivery along that route or if they don't have a facility in that neighborhood. So anybody that operates already by right within a certain neighborhood has to be able to traverse certain roads. And so they cannot be prohibited from doing that regardless of whether the city or the county has a restriction on.
But the access road, Industrial Access does, I mean, it already is approved for trucks, right?
That is correct.
And what about the other end, Malone Street, where it's divided? I went out there and rode it. So is it approved for trucks?
It is not, it is not currently restricted. Now, the main logistical issue with that route is that there are no traffic signals coming in.
Well, before you had the crossing where it mostly, and then you brought the trucks back to Highway 92 and there wasn't a traffic light there either.
Understood, understood, but that's the main.
You really hadn't changed anything. But what I couldn't understand is why was mostly closed to begin with? Because it's about two, three blocks from the underpass to begin with. Why did, why did they do that? I know the state has a mind of their own, I'm finding that about Highway 78 and Main Road.
I will not speak to that element, but however, it was really the railroad that triggered the requirement. Because the railroad has to do some work in order to facilitate the road project. And they were not either able or not comfortable... the road project, and they were not, uh, either able or not comfortable proceeding with that work without the closure of Mosley.
And another, uh, one last point is, I don't care where we put the detour, the truck drivers are gonna use their GPS and pick out their own favorite way of going through there, is that not right? 'Cause if they, if they can get to their destination, they're gonna use the best route for them.
Well, and, and Commissioner, to your point, generally, the detour route wants to be as short as possible and as close to the closure as possible.
I understand that, but, uh, like Lee Road, uh, when you come down Lee Road into Lithia Springs and go across the River Track, is that a state road? Brownsville, Lithia, whatever? It goes to Brownsville Road up there?
I don't know that that is a state route, but that would be a, a longer route, longer option.
Well, I don't know it, but it's a more direct, too. If, if it goes straight to Brownsville Road and then back into 92 up in Paulding County-
Oh, it's by the grocery store?
Yeah.
Right, right.
Well, I, I just see GPS using routes like that, that, um, but the only thing that concerned me about the Maroni Mill Road was the speed, because it is, uh, a lot of a straightaway type thing, but there's a real bad curve and a hill in that curve that I, I would worry much about because of the speed of the trucks more than anything else, not the number of the trucks, but the speed. Now you're back.
Okay, any other questions from Commissioner Mitchell?
But, I mean, we, we had this kind of conversation, so I guess if you wanna share, 'cause we, you're right, when you're looking at the one that's going, uh, that crosses Huey, and just crossing in, we just had a conversation with GDOT and a few others about that little sliver of road, and, and you're right, yes, right. And I even stated just what you're basically saying, and you might wanna share with them as well, about my concern was the safety, but from GDOT and driving that road, it works, so would you share with them our conversation, Miguel?
Yeah, essentially, uh, as part of the early discussions, GDOT, uh, once, once the options were, were set, uh, GDOT took some equipment, heavy equipment, tractor, trailer, out there and, and rode both of those routes, and they indicated that, uh, their preferred route was the Maroni Mill-Northburn Hickory, because it was signalized at both ends and more direct, however, that they could also use the other route if necessary. So, uh, both options are available.
Let's, let's just be real cautious, 'cause we got a public hearing tomorrow about being committal. This meeting is just announced, you have a public hearing tomorrow-
Right, 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 right.
Before we work it out, before it's public, we need to be careful.
And we're not working it out, though, we're just having a conversation, 'cause I know we had a conversation about, uh, the various- And that's why I propose to look at both, uh, detours versus that, that one, and you'll probably have a few people, uh, come out asking for and or against it, I'd just expect it, but a decision will have to be made, as I stated last time around, as to which route we will take, but the good part is, either one worked. Now, Miguel, did we ever, and I know I asked this question before, did we ever get, uh, GDOT to buy into both, if it ended up being both? I think they just prefer to be responsible in the end, two years later, if it takes that long, to be responsible for kinda putting back, uh, you know, making us good a whole with just one, am I correct?
Commissioner, to your point, uh, GDOT has, as a result of pretty substantial, extensive discussions, agreed to remedy any damage to the road, however, they certainly would like to keep that, that as, as short as section as possible route, because, because it is on their exposure, so they've indicated they, they're gonna go, they've gone out there and taken some core samples of the pavement, and, uh, they will be responsible for any repair during the use of that route by trucks, and then, uh, upon completion, they will overlay the whole, whole route. So, they indicated they would, they would not, uh, they, they would not be, uh, agreeable to both routes being used, but they would, either one that was selected, they would, uh, be responsible for repairs.
And whichever route becomes, uh, the detour route, um, they will be responsible, um, and it'll be notified, whether it's via GPS and any other means of truckers, which we can't control, kinda what these guys do or don't do.
They gonna do it, they won't-
Right, that, that'll be on them, but at least we're gonna do everything in our books to include GDOT and, and everybody else to kinda notify these guys, meaning truckers, as to, this is the, the detoured route to take, and, um, this is what you're exposed to, and I guess, from a law enforcement perspective, I guess then we will be, have to deal with our law enforcement to assure that they do things by the books, so, but I mean, I, I, I think, well, the good part is, either one will work, and, uh, I guess by tomorrow, we'll make a decision as to which one that it will be, but, um, we had lots of conversations about this, so, and Miguel, thank you for all your hard work in trying to help figure this out, and hopefully the community will show up and ask questions, and, and we'll decide on what that is tomorrow, so I, you're back.
Okay, any other questions from the Board? Thank you so much, Director Valentine. Next tab, number five on our resolutions, we have a resolution to rename the Douglas County Fire and EMS Department Training Complex in memory of L. Wayne Errington, the founding chief of the Douglas County Fire Department. Chief Spencer?
Chief Spencer, he's our chief.
Sorry about that, Deputy Chief.
Yep, what we're asking is to rename our training complex on, uh, Waltham Road in name of our founding chief, and, uh, would ask the Board of Commissioners to approve that.
Okay, any questions from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Moll here?
Give us a thumbnail sketch of what's involved with renaming, or what, what signs we're gonna be changing.
We're, we're gonna do, re, working with some local companies to try to get a sign donated, and we have a sign out front that says Douglas County Fire Department Training Complex, we'd like to swap that sign out, and then possibly put one up on the tower, but we've working with a couple of companies now.
The sign out front's the one on-
The fence, and then there's one, then there's one on the roadway on Cedar Mountain.
All right, all right.
But we'd like to put something special up on the side of the, uh, complex, as you can see from, uh, Waltham Road.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Tab number six, resolution to amend the 2018 budget for 2017 rollover encumbrances, grants, and projects. Director Hallman?
Yes, uh, good morning. This is, uh, my annual housekeeping adjustment that I've done before the Board every year after we close, uh, the prior school year. Uh, we closed out to, um, 2017, and any open purchase orders that were valid, um, that were, maybe the purchase order was done in 2017, but the item or the service was not provided until the 2018, uh, then we roll over that purchase order, um, so that it does not affect the department's current 2018 budget, 'cause they may have had the funds in their 2017 budget. Um, also, we had some grants that, um, because the state fiscal year and the federal fiscal year's different than our fiscal year, uh, we had some grants that were approved later in the year, and so that's, um, revenue coming in and expenditures going out, so we just rolled that over as well into the 2018 budget. So this is primarily just a, or not primarily, it is a housekeeping adjustment to adjust the 2018 budget, um, for all the departments affected.
Okay, any questions from the Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Guyer?
Could we get a list of these?
Sure.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, she said it is in the tab, yes. It's by line item, it's not by purchase order, just because of the way our system does it, it's by line item, but you can see, but the, the largest one that you, um, that makes up a lot of this total is the Bleakly Building. Uh, the money that we had left over to, uh, redo the Bleakly Building gets rolled over into the next year, that was the majority of it, but you had some smaller purchase orders, you know, that ranged from a thousand dollars, you know, all the way up to, you know, uh, ten thousand or whatever, but the list is attached. That line's all right. That's okay, that's fine.
Any other questions from the Board? Thank you. Uh, County Administrator, do you have any business today?
Um, yes, ma'am, there's one item that, um, if the Board sees fit, that we need to add, so, Ms. Anita Granger was, uh, notified last Friday of an $11,000 grant from the CJCC for DUI and drug court. We couldn't put it on the next agenda because it has to be signed and returned to the CJC no later than March 30th, 2018, so we'd like to add this to the, to the agenda, Jennifer has all that information, it'll go under the regular agenda, it won't be new business. Um, but, uh, Ms. Granger is here, if y'all have any questions on the grant.
Okay, Ms. Granger, could you please come forward?
Good morning.
Good morning, could you like to tell us a little bit about Ms. Granger?
So, apparently, CJCC has some emergency funds, and as I was looking at the expenditures in my drug screening line item, which is under other professional services in my budget, um, I noticed that I was going to have spent all of the, um, CJCC grant monies, and their fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, um, I would have, by the third quarter, the end of the third quarter of this March, I would have spent essentially all of that grant money for the drug screen. So I went ahead, they gave us like a week window to apply for emergency funds, and I thought, couldn't hurt, I could use the money rather than having to come to y'all at the end of next, at the end of this, our fiscal year, to get more monies, then I would just go ahead and reach out to them, and they did give me an additional $11,000 to get me through, um, with our drug screening, and, and that's really the, the basis of accountability courts without drug screening, we can't do all the other stuff that we do, so, um, I would ask that you accept this money.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
I have no objection, put it on there.
Yeah, we'll put it on there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Tab number seven, authorization, authorization to approve a grant with judicial alternatives of Georgia incorporation, JAG, for felony probation services or Superior Court, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents subject to final review, Judge-
I'm, I'm on General Hallows, I think, Madam Chair, items seven and eight, or the, essentially what's happened, two things, number one, there was a change, uh, with Neil Dapmarin's retirement, so a contract typically initiated by Chief State Court Judge, they roll over automatically. Both, uh, the Superior Court in item seven and the State Court in item eight have gotten together, we've made revisions to the contract because the law has changed, as y'all are aware, and essentially what this contract does is the probationer pays all the fees, there's no real drain on the county coffers, and it's got the requirements laid out. What I will tell you is that what's changed is the indigent portion of it, if there's an indigent being supervised under probation as determined by the court, there's no expense on the court or the county, it's just eaten by the company, so they get their fees out of what is non-indigent, is worked essentially. This contract doesn't have a date on it, we're gonna put a date, though, expiring December 31st, 2018, 'cause we wanted to line up with our other contracts on both seven, item seven and eight, uh, and I would tell you that there's a way out, I think it's a 30-day notice, for each, each party can give 30 days' notice, if there's a change in the chief judge, I think the probation depart, probation company gets 90 days to transition time as opposed to immediately ending, and so these contracts have been vetted by legal, uh, both judges have vetted them, and we've also reached out to our counterparts in other counties because of the changes in law to ensure that we, we're compliant with law, so these are updates. And they, by the way, we didn't have anything to do with the selection, these were selected by the chief judge in both the Superior Court and State Court, but we'd ask y'all to consider approving those tomorrow, and I think the judges are in court today, that's why they couldn't be here.
Any questions from the Board?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, we can, we can, I'm just gonna tack this, pin this, perhaps tomorrow when the judges are here, but I guess my first question is, um, it, a dollar amount?
Yeah, there, there's, it's, it's based on what service is being provided, in other words, there's no, I don't think there's a base amount in here, if it's, uh, it's one amount, if there is just fine only owed by somebody, it's one amount if it's monitored with an ankle bracelet, it's another amount if it's monitored with fines and/or community service and other aspects attached to it, and there's another amount if there's incarceration that then leads to probation, so it's broken down segmentally, and I can tell you the section, um, I'm sorry, I should have had this, well, it's 15 pages, so it's a little long, um-
You knew I was gonna ask a number, but, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll let you tell you what paragraph it is and say y'all some time. Uh, if you look at G on the, item seven, page eight of 15, it starts at the bottom of page eight and goes into page nine. Uh, for regular probation supervision, which includes a minimum of one office contact per month, it may be required up to four, the probationer shall pay a fee of $39 per month. For intensive probation supervision, which includes a minimum of one office contact per week and four office contacts each month, probationer shall pay a fee of $50 per month. JAG shall collect such probation fee for each month, probation after probation, and then there's a counting and remit, remittance back to the court. A, one more supervision fee is defined as the date the probationer's placed on probation. There's some other breakdown fees, there are some people that only have to pay a fine, and they pay it over time, and that number's $39, uh, per month. There are some services with the, the GPS tracking device, and they've got a rate breakdown on, uh, page eight of that, and I think those fees are consistent in both contracts, seven and eight, 'cause they basically mirror each other, once for felony probation, that was from Mr. May.
Okay, now, I'll close with this last question, um, this was, uh, two, three years ago, um, there was conversations, and there was an action taken by the Board of Commissioners, whereby we were subsidizing, uh, basically, the probation, and I want to know is that provision in this contract, I know we're looking at a lot of conversations, we bring it in-house, we keep it outsourced, et cetera, I know we've had a transition, so this is a, a fair question, it says, are we still required to have to, do we anticipate, or do we anticipate subsidizing any shortfalls in this, or do we reset this?
No, sir, we do not. There's no subsidizing on this, this is a new, uh, I think, they were our probation team last year, um, I think there were some issues with the previous, um, company, which we did have to subsidize those, um, but no, with this company, we're not.
Okay, all right, so, so if I looked in the budget for last year, since they were there last year, that means they were whole, we, we didn't have to put up anything, they ate their-
Well, last year was, it was a little bit of both, so the contract with the new one didn't come in, with, with JAG, I think is the name of it, it didn't come in until maybe March or so, something like that, I'd have to look back to be sure, I'm just going by memory, but Sentinel was in, they were in, uh, they were our probation team before that.
And the last question is, who's responsible for evaluation program? Like, for example, the jail is self-contained, right, we, we understand how to perhaps evaluate that, um, you, you hear from citizens who say that, you know, these guys treat us wrong, even though they're on probation, they still have a certain degree of, of expectation. Uh, and I guess my question is, who evaluates them, uh, that actually, are they just collecting checks, just collecting fines, are they, what value are they bringing back to sort of, you remember, we had this conversation with them, do we get into programming, on all these things, are you just sort of people check in and they get their fines and fees, or who evaluates? Is it the judge, is it somebody at the state, I'm just asking that, and we can bring it up tomorrow, I don't have to belate at this point.
I think ultimately it's the judge, because the judge is the one entering the, the judge oversees all probation through the department, whoever it is, is contracting for the service. I think your question's a little deeper, for probationers having a problem, how do they report that? Well, they could probably report it to the state, or they could report it to the Sheriff's Department if it's crime, they could report it to the judge theoretically. I've been on both sides of this, I've actually sued a probation department, not one that was in Douglas County, uh, but there's a, there's a, there's means to get remedies, and there's a complaint process.
There is a process and so forth, so, and again, I'm not trying to get into the judge's authority, which is more of a, you know, just wanna make sure, because we do get questions out all the time, but people's experiences with, um, dealing with government, 'cause they see government as one whole thing. All right, I'll go back, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you so much, we'll move on to tab number nine. Tab number nine is authorization to submit for 2019 grant application for family treatment court. Is Jenny McDavid here? Mr. David? We'll move on. Tab number 10, authorization to submit an application for the fiscal year juvenile justice incentive grant in the amount of $160,000, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents and no match required, unless, um, Jenny McDavid as well, so she might get a real follow-up with her. And tab number 11, authorization to award a contractor certain architects incorporation for the design of a multipurpose recreational- for the design of a multipurpose recreation center with a cost of $339,950, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Dukes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, ma'am. First of all, the, all the submittals were evaluated by the SPOSH evaluation team, and that team recommended Sutton Architects to design our new multipurpose recreation center. We then took it before the Recreation Committee, and they advised as well selected Sutton Architects. So they approved the selection of the SPOSH team. So we're bringing it to you today to the Commission Committee.
Okay. Any questions? Vice Chairman Roxy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so, so we're gonna, inside their scope of work, did they, did they talk about how they will gain public input? Or is that part of the process in which, are we just gonna build this? Or, I'm just curious, that's the process? Because then, as we know, we're wanting to build this multipurpose rec center, and it's something that we talked about, but as it relates to what goes in it, functionality, I know there's some base functionality, but still, how do we anticipate engaging the public on a vertical building? And Gary, we've had this conversation, so I just wanted to bring out what we were thinking.
Right. They show, they show a lot of working with the department, working with the Recreation Department, with the director and, and the employees of the Recreation Department. They also will have public input as far as what the public would like to see in the design.
And how do you anticipate, I mean, I guess there's, and again, how will you anticipate capturing that information?
We could do it in a number of ways. You know, public meetings, surveys, putting surveys out, putting information, responding information on our website, in the county website.
Yep.
Those are several ways we could do this.
And again, they're there for design. I'm just curious how, was that part of the scope of work, which was to engage the committee, or whether that was gonna fall on the shoulders of the Parks and Rec Group to supplement their formal professional service efforts? I mean, I don't have a preference one way or another, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Right, it was not in the scope of work.
Okay, all right, so that falls on us to, okay. You said the cost was roughly 300, a little less than 400,000, 380?
Correct.
And that's within our budget?
Three thirty-nine.
Three thirty-nine, and that was in our budget?
Yes.
It's part, a big part of the total amount that was allocated for this project.
Right, 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 I got you. And I guess my, the final question is, is how long do they anticipate this process will take? Would that a schedule built into this, or?
Nine months.
The design, you're talking about just the design, not the construction?
Yeah.
Three months, three to six months.
Three, six months.
Nine months was a good start.
The start to finish three, six months, okay. And will renderings and things of that nature be shared as a milestone or checkpoint within this, to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I just want to, again, make sure people get to see it. I yield back.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
And we'll, as, as, thank you, Madam Chair. As Gary has alluded to, we'll, we'll update everybody again on not only this item, but all the other items later on, but, but yes.
Through the Oversight Committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you so much, Director Dukes.
Yes, ma'am.
Tab number 12, authorization to approve a change order to the TUSA consulting services contract in the amount of $50,000 due to an increase in the scope of work to be performed, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Peacock?
Yes, ma'am. On May 1st of 2017, we signed the consulting contract with TUSA to provide us all the consulting services that were necessary to, to plan and implement the new radio system for Douglas County. The original cost, cost proposal that TUSA submitted to us included a cost for a five-site RF tower configuration. After we actually had Motorola design the plan, that increased to a total of nine sites. So it increased from five to nine. So TUSA is asking that we provide some additional funding for them to do all of the testing and making sure that the tower sites are appropriate. There's also a, an amount of money involved for the inter subsystem interface. The original contract only called for one or two inter system, inter subsystem interfaces, but because of the way that we've designed the, the system and the desire to have it interoperable with multiple other vendors, that's increased to five. We're gonna be connected with Cobb County, Fulton County, the Metro Atlanta Urban Area Security Initiative, the Western Area Regional Radio System, and the City of Atlanta. And last but not least, the original design that we had did not include a fire alerting system within the, the radio system. And that has been, that has been included now, and that, TUSA will be monitoring the installation and the turn up of that system. So they are requesting that a change order and the request of $50,000 be approved. I support that, and I think all of the other stakeholders from Fire EMS and EMOC and the Sheriff's Department would as well. This would be dollars well spent to ensure that the system is exactly what we're looking for once the vendor completes the construction.
Okay, any questions from the board, Commissioner Mokier?
Well, you answered my first question. You're confident and supportive of this, of this change request. My recollection was that it was significantly higher.
$97,000 was their first request. We negotiated down to fifty.
So you negotiated down to fifty?
Yes, sir, we did.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. I yield back.
Okay, Commissioner Mokier?
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand. All this is due to something we have added to the system.
Yes, ma'am.
It was not in the original bid pass.
It was not. Increased scope of work.
Because, you know, either there were other bidders and everything, I just don't want to bring any problems in.
No, ma'am. We wouldn't let that happen.
All right.
Okay, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Commissioner Mokier?
So I'm glad that you negotiated it down, which is good. But did we lose anything in the negotiation? So what do we, what do we?
We did not lose anything. We did not give anything away in the negotiation.
Okay, you just kind of hit them in the headlock and just?
I did.
I originally said we would not pay anything.
Okay. Got it. Okay, tough negotiation.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Director Peacock. Tab number 13, authorization to approve contract to terminus to serve as municipal advisor for Douglas County, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. Director Holman?
Yes. We are asking permission or approval to engage terminus services on a retainer contract. It would be $4,000 per month for duties mentioned in the contract, like the preparation of financial feasibility analysis on any new projects we have, any advice on overall rating strategies, any advice on any of our overall financial controls, any advice or projects needed regarding any new projects. And they would have about 14 different things that they will provide. We have used them, of course, as you know, for our SPOSH, for the SPOSH bond issue. And speaking with them, it's just more effective and efficient for us to pay on a retainer than on a per-project basis. It's more expensive on a per-project. And we did have history of that. We had used, not, it wasn't Terminus, it was another firm with the Foxhall analysis. We had two analysis, and you're looking at a project to that capacity of running anywhere between 20 to 25,000 dollars per project. We're getting them on retainer regardless of however many projects we want them to look at, or we need their advice or outside consulting expertise on, it would be included in that retainer. And speaking with Madam Chair, one of the special projects that, if this is approved, that we would like for them to look at is to do a complete and thorough review of all of our tax abatements, the assistance with the Master Capital Improvement Plan, and any updates to the financial model that we have. Regarding the tax abatements, as you know, with GASB, we've been required to report it in the financial statements, but it's been more of a higher level review where I think what Madam Chair and Vice Chair talked about in the Finance Committee would be have them get down in the weeds, work with our Development Authority, work with the Appraisal Department and the Tax Commissioners Department, as well as my department, because it would help us with fulfilling our GASB requirements, to make sure that the abatements are being followed through with the rules when the abatements was given, make sure there's no money that's been left out on the table and stuff like that. But this was just being one example of a project that we would have them do. So this is what we're asking.
Any questions from the board? Commissioner Mokier?
Yeah, let me ask a question on, on potential use here in, first of all, I was pleased with their work on our financial forecasting processes as well as oversight and district panel, whatever you want to call it. But potential for, you know, possible future public private initiatives, let's just say solar power, in the county partnering with Georgia Power and North Greystone for a solar power generation farm. Would they have expertise or knowledge, in your opinion, to take a financial analysis of something like that and be able to reject, pay back time and so forth?
Yes, they would actually, I'm glad you brought that up. They actually helped us do an analysis on the Ameresco utility savings agreement that we had a few, maybe a month or so ago. So yes, they would have that expertise. They have all kinds of different models and staff and resources that they have more readily available than just, than what we do.
Okay, let me ask you another question related to that now. Okay, let's say they're gonna do, do an analysis on county utility generation farm, solar generation. Were they to need to require additional, very specific, expertise in, in solar generation? Would that be encompassed in their, in their retainer, or would we have to pay an additional amount for that? Now, would it be included? What is the reading of their contract?
Well, here's what I think, I just, I've read it. They are basically consultants, and so if it required some specific engineering science to come in, we would have to pay somebody to bring that thing. They would just analyze it for us because they have the capacity to analyze the data. And so I don't want to make this look like this is a panacea of all questions that may come out, because that wouldn't be fair to them. They would analyze whatever numbers were generated by an expert if it were something way offline.
Okay, good. I yield back.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you so much, Mr. Holman. I see that Ms. McDavid, Ms. McDavid, could you go to the podium? We just had two.
Sure.
We bypassed you, and you were tab number nine and 10. So I'll just mention, I'll start with nine. Authorization to submit the 2019 grant application for family treatment court. Would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, this is our family dependency treatment court, drug court program for parents that are involved in deprivation courts. I am still in the midst of writing the application, which is why I didn't get up here, because I was, I forgot, actually, I had this on the agenda. There is matching funds required, but that comes out of my budget that I currently have. And I'm looking at about 80 to 85,000 that I'm writing for.
Let me answer my question. Okay. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Vice Chairman Roxy?
But we will get a copy of the application once you get a chance to get around to?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that, that's important for the process, just.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Mokier?
I know you're gonna absorb this in your budget to match. What is that, is it 5%, 10%, 80%?
You have to match 10%.
10%.
And, and that's in dollars and cents, or is that in?
It's a formula that they come up with. You divide actually the amount of funding that I'm requesting, which I haven't finished, so I can't tell you the amount, but I think it'll be around 80,000. You divide it by nine, and that's our match.
Okay, so that is a dollar amount coming out of the budget that will?
Yes.
An income.
Oh, is it an income? Because I was also?
It's an income match, yes.
Oh, it's an income match?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not additional funds that'll be added to the budget.
Got it, okay, so, got you. I yield back.
Okay, any other questions regarding this number nine? Okay, we'll move on to tab number 10. Authorization to submit an application for the fiscal year juvenile justice incentive grant in the amount of $160,000, and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents and no matches required.
That's correct. This is from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council also. The $160,000 is used to pay for services for kids or delinquent kids that are coming through court. We offer functional family therapy and art program, Botman life skills programs, and those things are done, actually are taught at the county extension office in the evenings.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, I was late.
Yeah, I understand. Tab number 14, we'll just circle back to tab number 14. Approval of, of a 206 lot preliminary plat for the Fountainwood, Moccasen, Point and Saddle Ridge pods and Anaweki Trail subdivision of Highway 92 and 166. Director Worthington, please go to the.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it's okay with the board, I'm gonna have Ron Roberts.
Yeah, Ron, as well.
Director.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so this is actually Fountainwood and Moccasen Point Saddle Ridge are the last three random pods in the Anaweki Trail subdivision. These are, these pods have 206 lots, and they occupy 119 acres of the total, 714 acres. These lots are part of the original PUDC, and therefore have a minimum lot size of 6,250 square feet, minimum house size of 1,800 square feet of heated space. The property is located in Land Lots 99, 115, First District, Fifth Section. The owner and developer is LGI Homes, and the proposed preliminary plat is attached, or sent for the reference. The density change, you'll notice, is also from 1.98 to 1.83. We actually have Howard Ray representing LGI Homes here today as well, if there's any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Mokier?
Whenever I hear density change, even though I think in this case it's pretty miniscule, it always piques my curiosity. What is the cause for the density change in this?
This, this actually has a, a long history. The density actually was changed, I think this thing was passed as a PUDC when I was five, so it's been around for a while.
Well, I remember it. I was a little more than five.
Commissioner Mokier, what I would point out is that the original density for the, what we're gonna call Anaweki Trail east of the river, was 1.98 or roughly. It maintained the R2 designation, okay? So originally, the north half of the property was R2, the bottom half in the seventies was PUD. So when they redid, updated the PUDC, they basically sort of said, we're gonna cap that eastern half at a density of two or 1.98. So where we're at actually for the holistic width, this 206 going in to the entire east side, we come in at 183.
Okay, so like a total recalculation.
Yes, sir. And so this pod by itself is 1.73, so it's, it's also below the 198.
Okay, all right, thank you. I yield.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Tab number 15, authorization to approve. Authorization to approve an agreement with GDOT in regard to a temporary designated truck detour route during the construction of the Highway ninety-two relocation project and authorize the chairman to sign all related documents. This was tabled as well for two twenty eighteen. Director Valentine?
Yes, this goes with the public hearing that they will be conducting tomorrow and essentially is gonna cover whichever one of the routes you decide on, if either one, and it is the confirmation that GDOT is responsible for making us a network.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the Board? Thank you, good. All right, tab number sixteen. Authorization of the purchase of target solutions, training software and amount of twenty thousand dollars to be funded through the SLOST reimbursements from the City of Douglasville and the City of Villarica. Chief, Deputy Chief, Dr. Myers?
This is a, good, a better, it's training that we do every month in our, in the stations, the guys will do it extra, they can log on to a computer and we can all get a certain amount of our training through the computer. And this is, like I said, this is an online kind of deal. We have a group that does it now, it's Moodle, this is a more advanced, it will actually keep up with our records, so we turn into the state to redo our, to recertify for our EMT licenses, that kind of thing. It'll help us with a lot of our, the necessary audit, for the ISO audits and stuff, we'll already have all of our training stuff together when they get, it's at a cost of about twenty thousand, and like I said, this is to replace what the existing, what we have now, it's a much better program. And the design of the stuff is a bit easier for us.
This is great. Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you. Advancing technology is always good, so thank you. Tab number seventeen. Authorization, this is for you as well, Deputy Chief. Approval to replace two-thirds of the protective turnout gear in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to be funded through the SLOST reimbursements from the City of Douglasville and the City of Villarica. Deputy Chief?
This is to replace our turnout gear. We try to keep each employee with two sets of gear. If we go out right now, we were to work a residential fire, all the soot and toxins and stuff that get in the gear, we like to take them and wash them. Well, why it's being washed, they have to have something else to wear, and their reserve gear that they have now is outdated, so we'd like to replace it.
Okay. How often are you updating this gear?
Somewhere between five and ten years, depending, is what the gear manufacturer tells us to, but some of our trucks are getting so busy now that will put a lot of wear and tear on the gear, and some of it can be, is three years, depending on the, you know, how active that firefighter is.
And I think the last time we purchased was somewhere in the range of thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, we did a third, a third, a third.
Yes, yes.
And it might have been fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, but it was somewhere in that range, was about five years ago.
Yes. The only problem, though, is that the time before that, when we bought this gear, the reserve gear that we were replacing, we bought it all at one time.
Okay.
So.
Basically. Any other questions from the Board? All right. Thank you. Well, Vice Chairman Ross?
Yeah, I have, okay. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe two. So, this is the latest equipment that we're replacing it with? Is it like the latest and greatest, or is it just more of a, it's utility, it's functional?
No, we actually set up a committee and we have the different companies come in. We look at their gear, there's several, the outer jacket, the inner jacket, and several things that we look at. This is very functional gear. We're asking you now, the last set we bought, but we're asking you now to approve this and then we'll go out and bid it out. So, we haven't, we haven't bid the gear out yet.
And again, so I'm just, I'm sensitive, I'm a big proponent of equipment and making sure our first responders have it, so I don't know, I'm asking this question, just are we getting the right gear for them, are we just trying to make it by on a nickel? I mean, there's sometimes you.
No, no, sir. We want the best for our folks, so.
I just, it's okay to say that, I just need to hear it. Relate to that, and this is my last question, just, how many fires do we have on average? I'm just curious, how many do we have annually, monthly? I don't know how you calculate it, but I'm just curious, do we have a lot?
Our numbers have increased a lot in our residential stuff. The commercial stuff's getting better with the new laws, with the, the sprinkler heads and stuff are helping us a bunch. We probably run, and this is a guess, I don't have the numbers with me, I know we ran, we're on, it looks like we'll run about eighteen thousand calls this year, and probably ten percent of those are actually structure fires. The bulk of what we do is medical, car wrecks, those kind of things, but, but it has, yes, it has increased from, like I said, I started here thirty years ago, and of course, in that thirty years, it's probably tripled the amount of structure fires we run now. All the homes that were new back then are now got age on them, the wiring gets age on them and things pick up.
So, it's not, but say convinced it, because the newer homes, to your point, should be better or?
Yes, should be, yes. But then we do make mistakes. I've got daughters at home that, you know, love to leave their curling irons on, so we get a brand-new home and still have issues too, so.
And to that point, and it's related, to what extent do we educate the public? And again, I think sometimes we take, not, but we take for granted that the public knows, right? Because there's always a new generation, there's always new, right? And so, what do we do to educate? I know there may be a Firefighters Month and there's awareness and stuff, but how consistent are we in getting those simple messages that we assume everybody understands through common sense?
We are very consistent. As a department, we are, interact a lot with the Board of Education, a lot of our kids, and one of the new SLOST items we pick up this year was our Fire Safety House. But we also, in that same group, do a lot of stuff with businesses too. We have fire extinguisher training that we go out and do, those kind of things. So, we're active, very active in that part of it.
Smoke alarms?
Yep, smoke alarms, yep. We give out smoke alarms to folks within the county, and we actually go out and install them too.
We take, it's high tech, we just don't.
Yes.
We go out and really.
Yep.
Thank you. Are you?
Do you have any questions? Commissioner Taylor? I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How long is a fire extinguisher good? When I built my house in eighty-six, I put one on top of my freezer and I've never moved.
It's probably not any good. It just depends on the construction of, most of them are built, the bigger ones are built in and they'll have a gauge on them and they'll tell you when they lose pressure, but they recommend that, we check ours every three years, unless we use.
You might want to check yours. I don't know how to check it. So, what does someone do if they have an old fire extinguisher and they think that they'll use it if they need to? So, who checks it? How can we?
You can bring it to your local fire station and we'll check it.
Okay, I'll see you.
Okay. We get that all the time, though.
The authorization, quite forbidding, same word that we always use on the site, which is number seventeen.
Oh, authorization, yeah, okay, all right. All right, any other questions? You're on again, Deputy Chief, one more.
One more.
Tab number eighteen. Approval of the purchase of automatic vehicle locators, ABL, for mobile internet connectivity in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to be funded through SLOST reimbursements from the City of Douglasville and the City of Villarica. Deputy Chief?
This is a program we started a couple of years ago. Our ambulance has already have them, but it, we want them for our fire trucks too. It interacts with the CAD system at nine-one-one and it gives them, one, where we're at, they can locate us, they don't have to get on the radio and ask who's the closest to this fire. They'll be able to look on screen and see us on the screen and know who's the closest. But on our end of it, it also gives us the ability to look at maps of the area with hydrant layers on them, any call history, if, even interacts with the sheriff's department, if they go out and serve a warrant the day before and don't find who they're looking for, it'll pop up as a red flag and we can look, and if we see, you know, this particular person that, you know, or this particular car, that we can call them before we enter into billing. So, it's a lot to do with safety and convenience for an I-one dispatcher.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Thank you. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Approval of expenses, Commissioners, just take a look at those for tomorrow and then we will approve the expenses tomorrow. Committee updates, we will now have our committee updates. We have, the first update will be Intergovernmental Committee, Intergovernmental Committee, which is Commissioner Mitchell, so I'll come back to you in a second. Parks and Recreation Oversight Committee, are you providing that for?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
We brought several things before the Recreation Oversight Committee in the last several months. I'll just go down the list. The first one was a recommendation to let Allen Dell do our design work for our restaurants and concession stands at Hill Art Park and Fair Play Park, and that was approved. The second was the one that's on the agenda tomorrow is Sutton Architects, we brought that before, and if you so choose to approve that, that was a recommendation to go before the commission. We had a security guard that was actually working for the Drug Court, that was assigned there several, several years ago, and we needed that security guard in our parks, so the Recreation Oversight Committee recommended that that security officer be put back in the parks, and we accomplished that. We also, we had a question come up about jumping the citizens' cars off in parks, and we brought that before the Recreation Oversight Committee and before legal, and legal advised us, we should probably continue to do that, it was a, it was a good publicity idea, but before we allowed any more of that, we actually sent our park security officers to school, and they went to garage and they took a class on how to do that appropriately, so we wouldn't damage any cars or any of our cars or any of our personnel. So, they accomplished, they accomplished that and will continue to do that as we get new officers on. We established a Friends of the Park Committee, and we also have Friends of the Park now on our website, and people that want to sign up can go and pick a park or pick a section of a park or a flower bed or whatever, and top us with maintaining that throughout the park system. And the last was, we had a group come before us, the Winston Knights, they're actually an offshoot of the Douglasville Recreation Department and needed a place to play, and they requested the football field at Post Road Park, and it went before the Oversight Committee and that was approved, so we will have a new football program playing at Post Road Park, the Winston Knights. And that's, that's it, that's our report.
I'll jump in if you don't mind. But, but yes, so the Parks and Recs have been busy, but would you just ask me, I'm sorry?
I said, was the organization out at the park consulted to?
But there is.
Yes, they were.
Okay, well.
But they're solid.
That's right, that's football, but this is football, not soccer. Okay, okay. So, yes, Parks and Recs are, are busy and things are definitely moving. Intergovernmental Committee is, you know, we're doing our usual, we're having conversations with fellows that need to be, but right now, there's nothing, there's no hot items. I would say there's no hot items, we'll just leave it at that. We'll leave it right there. Technology? Oh, yeah, my friend Russ, okay. Any updates? I know we got some things going on, but I don't know, do you want to share with the team?
Yes, I just put together a few of the recent recommendations and some of the things that we have pending, so, all right, the most recent formal recommendation was for moving forward the eight-hundred megahertz radio system, that went out, you know, obviously a few months ago. Couple of things we're looking at or considering pending are new cuing system for the bleakly tax tag office, I think we all had agreement on that at our last meeting, just looking for signatures to get that recommendation out. Also, we discussed and are looking to put together recommendations for officially funding a piece of refresh as a vehicle for delivering Windows ten, and then a potential conversion to Office three sixty-five for our all county employees, so those are the things we're helping for us right now.
Well, we talked about three sixty-five at our last meeting, and it was very important as far as security for our computer system, and the judge was there, Judge Emerson was there, and he is, he was relaying to us all the problems that not having, we're on Windows, what is it, we're on ten.
Microsoft Office version.
Microsoft.
Yeah.
And so, that's causing a lot of problems with the new equipment that the tax office is getting in and everything. So, we can do it one or two different ways, but this was, we thought, the most efficient, although it is the least thing, but it's always updated. It is always updated and you're never behind like we are now. We've got so many systems out there right now, and a lot of the new equipment just does not work right, and the security is a big issue, big issue, especially with the judge, because he said we were vulnerable for.
But I think, and Russ has tested this, I think no matter how we go at this, we gotta go at it some kind of way, because if we don't, we'll always be behind, and we get one piece of equipment that may be to date and the other piece of equipment won't work because it's dated, so, I mean, but.
Correct, and one of the big security issues is Windows seven will go out of support with Microsoft in two thousand and twenty. That sounds like a long way out, but we have over six hundred computers deployed right now with Windows seven. So, if we don't start the process now of updating that, we'll really be behind the sticks in two thousand and twenty when that becomes a huge security.
Right, right.
And even if we went to Windows sixteen, we'd be outdated in a few months, so it's just always.
Technology, technology is a non-stop, and I'm glad we got our friends down there to just kind of keep us abreast and keep everybody on, focused on that, yes.
Can I say, one other thing is about the refresh. This is where we replace the computers in the courthouse in an incremental way, so that we don't have to replace them all at one time, and we stopped it year before last?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and so, we need to.
Last year.
It's going to.
Yeah, last year was the first year we did not fund it.
We did not fund it last year, so it's not funded again this year, and this is something, if you get behind in technology, you're gonna have to hire more people, really, and so this is something badly needed, so that we're all be on the same page.
Yes, I agree. Ambrose agrees.
Yes, yes, I think everybody agrees. I think with these tablets we got, so it's coming.
It's coming.
Yes, it's coming. So, just FYI. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, that's all I have.
All right, thank you again. And last but not least, programming. Rick, I'd love to see you, if you want to share all the great things that are happening in the programming and EC twenty-three and all the other great things going on there.
Sure. Good morning, Chairman, and Board Commissioners, and everyone. A lot of things are happening, but, you know, to begin, just to give an update regarding the online voting system for the Board of Commissioners, there's a little glitch in terms of software program with the company we're dealing with. We figured what that problem was regarding the software, Chrome, that's gonna be installed. We expect to be back online.
Technology, see, it's changing, so.
Sure, sure. We expect to be back online tomorrow, tomorrow, just to give you an update regarding that. We've been working actively to increase and elevate the profile of Douglas County in ways through our Communications and Community Relations Department. We just recently completed an event we organized in celebrating Alana Myers-Taylor, our U.S. Olympian from Douglas County, where the governor came and delivered some remarks, you know, we also were able to. You know, we also were able to collaborate and include, uh, as I should say, our schools, uh, children. The National Anthem was sung by Alexander High School, your mastery course. We also had Douglas County High School's Drum Line Escort herein as well, through a parade. We've been...
Well, you, you also had City TV.
Yes.
Another big piece of collaborative effort that goes on, so, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. We, uh, collaborated from the very beginning with, uh, the City of Douglasville to pull this off. You know, using, you know, their resources, our resources, uh, production needs beforehand to, uh, work on completing. We even held a news conference, uh, to allow, um, allow her to address, you know, the media and questions, you know, regarding whether she would compete as well. For my department, we elevated the use of social media as well. You know, just, you know, as of yesterday, uh, when there was a severe weather, you know, alert, you know, we were able to notify, uh, members of the, the public, uh, who even made remarks, you know, on Facebook such as, you know, this is why, you know, I live here in this area, I'm glad to get this information quickly. So, um, you know, that's happening as well. We are in the process of writing a script for our first SPOS Up to the Minute update. So, you'll be seeing that on the air very soon, hosted by Commissioner Mitchell and David Good, Communications Manager. Really communicating, uh, to the public exactly what's going on with the SPOS funds and the, uh, projects. So, you know, that's, uh, happening as well.
And I guess, I'll just last but not least, I mean, they might already know this, but the hiring of the young lady that is a part of your team, and, and I don't know if we shared that at any other meetings, but I think we published it at least right next to her. I mean, everybody knows she's there, but...
Sure, sure, absolutely. New in our department is our communications and media specialist Lena Hardy. She, we, uh, she's been on the last couple of months, um, you know, shooting, editing, uh, projects, our district dialogue projects as well. Other, you know, programming items.
Good stuff. Uh, outside of that, I think, uh, that's our report for all three of those committees, and, uh, all is good in the county.
Okay, next we have, uh, Finance Committee, uh, report, Commissioner Robinson.
All right, very good. I have, yeah, as opposed to what we did, we're gonna sort of give some, um, some insight into what we plan to do. We have a Finance Committee today at 2 o'clock. Uh, a couple of items, obviously this is a public meeting, but there's, um, two or three items that I just wanted to bring up. Jennifer, you wanna hit two, three, and four? Three, four, and five?
The Moody's?
Yeah.
Yes. You know, we went out for, uh, bonds this time last year, and, um, Moody's and I'm waiting on S and P to probably do their annual review. But we received the final Moody's review, their annual comment on Douglas County. Um, I'll pass that over. For right now, I have to give Moody's permission to, uh, to share this publicly, so I just ask that y'all just keep it, um, to yourselves until I get the authorization that I can distribute it and make it available through open records. But it's just a, um, report on the review of Douglas County where we stand since we issued the bonds, and as you can see, um, they still give us, you know, the AA2 rating.
Very good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very good. In addition, we're gonna talk about the, um, in today's meeting, talk about the 2008, um, budget improvement request. It's gonna be revisited today, so I look forward to seeing what's presented. In addition, we have on the agenda to couple up, um, a shares department incentive regarding applications and applicants and how to get them in. Uh, we'll look forward to that. And then we got one more, Jennifer, excess fund.
Yes, we're gonna be, uh, reviewing a draft of the excess fund balance policy that was brought before y'all a meeting or so ago about, um, how to, if, once we meet our 10% or we wanna go up to 15% and be excess above that, we could set money aside into a committed fund balance for capital. Since we rely so much on, um, squashed, we wanna be able to have another funding source and be able to set money aside. So, we'll be going over that draft, um, extension of our fund balance policy or addition to our fund balance, uh, policy, and, uh, bring a recommendation to the full board within the next month of what that, what we feel like the recommended policies should be.
Agreed. That, that's it for today's meeting, so I'm gonna go ahead and shift over to Transportation, Gary? Just highlight a couple of the ones we're gonna talk about, um, and tomorrow's meeting at 2 o'clock. Both of these are back-to-back, finance is today at 2:00 P.M., uh, public meeting, and so is tomorrow.
From the, the multimodal standpoint, we have three items that we'll be discussing tomorrow. One is, will be a recommendation, uh, asking for the full Board of Commissioners to authorize a grant application with Federal Transit Administration. This will be for $240,000, uh, with a $60,000 local match for, uh, furniture and equipment to go in the addition to the Transportation Center. And that, that won't have any impact on the county budget, because that particular project is already in my 2018 budget. Also, we're sort of related to that, um, I have the, the final drawings and the, uh, architect's rendering of the outside, the exterior of, of the new addition and how it's going to fit in with our existing building. I'll be presenting that to the committee, uh, tomorrow for their review, and then hopefully we'll get the recommendation to submit that to the full Board of Commissioners also. And then the third item we'll have tomorrow is, well, I'll have an update on our negotiations, uh, with the collaborative firm regarding our, our branding and public outreach project. We had a negotiating meeting with, uh, the collaborative firm last year, it went real well. And right now they're in the process of putting together their, their scope of work and, and price for those projects, and we'll talk about that tomorrow as well.
Very good. Thank you. Miguel, you wanna add anything to the broader?
Yes, we'll be talking tomorrow about the VIRs as well, and, uh, we're gonna be revisiting the status of the Route 90... We're gonna be revisiting, uh, the, uh, the status of the Lee Road Winding, uh, project. That's moving, uh, along towards getting closer and closer to being able to be, uh, deemed, uh, ready for construction. However, uh, we're tracking the funding on that. And I think that's all of the items that we have.
That's sufficient enough, thank you Miguel. And just one final thing is that we are meeting with a citizen group tomorrow as part of our, um, hear their comments regarding, um, transportation, specifically, um, the bus services. So, that is on our agenda tomorrow as well, time permitting. Are you up here?
Okay. We have committee reports from, uh, Commissioner Mulcair, and he has three reports. We omitted one, and not by mistake, but it's a newer, uh, committee, and, uh, we just didn't add it, but we will add it for our future updates. Uh, Benefits Committee, Commissioner Mulcair, you have Pension Advisory Board and the Public Safety Committee. I hope you would elaborate on those, please.
Yeah, I didn't prep for the Public Safety, but I'll, I'll, uh, make up something. I'm gonna ask Director Perry to go ahead and come to the podium, and he and I will do a little, kind of a little give and take on the latest Benefits Committee, uh, meeting, which was, uh, in, uh, in last month. Uh, we did an, uh, an enrollment overview, uh, and, uh, had pretty good marks, uh, good response, good remarks. Uh, we had several, uh, public, I say public input, employee input... Yes, sir. Meetings that were fairly well attended, uh, we had, uh, quite a few, few of those meetings. And, uh, very, very few people, um, excuse me, most people did their online enrollment. They did. And I did not, I came into the office, 'cause I wanted to sit through the actual process of sitting down with an agent or with a representative of our consultant, and I actually enrolled online, sitting with somebody, so I had a better understanding of it. Very simple, straightforward, uh, and, uh, we're looking, look, again, looking forward to 2019. Uh, we, we will do an analysis of, uh, potential, uh, new healthcare provider. I don't think there's any, there's not any broad dissatisfaction with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, or just like, you know, hiring an auditor or, or whatever, it's good to just kinda look at where you are, uh, and, uh, see if there's, uh, some better possibilities out there for healthcare, um, for Douglas County employees. Uh, another thing that was enlightening, and I'm gonna give you your chance here in a second, Frederick.
Go right ahead.
The, uh, emergency room usage continues to be a problem in that, uh, people are going to the emergency room for things that are really not emergencies. You know, head colds, uh, sometime, you know, just back ache, uh, tummy ache, that kind of thing. And, uh, could really best be handled by if they had a personal care, a personal physician. And, uh, so unfortunately, what a lot of people do is, rather than have a, a personal care physician, uh, they go to, go to the emergency room. So, a year ago, we increased the deductible on that. Uh, it's, I can't say that we're satisfied as a result thus far in China and, Frederick, so we wanna give it another year. Would you talk around a bit about emergency room usage?
Yes, and, um, we added a co-insurance to that, so, um, uh, it's a little bit more expensive to utilize that emergency room benefit. We found that that was one of the more expensive, uh, benefits that we offer that the employees are utilizing. And MSI has been able to track that, and they've shown us that some of these visits, majority of visits are kinda frivolous, so, uh, as Commissioner mentioned. So, we added that to, uh, to, uh, really try and help the employees more so understand that, uh, that they have other options available to them. And one of the bigger things we've been trying to accomplish is to get our employees to establish a relationship with their primary care physician. So, it's moving a little slow, but it's moving in the right direction. So, uh, where, uh, emergency room, at, at least the frivolous use of the emergency room, uh, is down slightly.
Inappropriate use, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna have to ask you to touch on something else too, uh, which, uh, I think is, I wanna say is, it's underutilized, for sure. And that is our, our live health online using, being able to sit down and visit with the doctor online.
Yes.
And, uh, and I think we have, uh, actually some personal experience here with, with Jennifer. Uh, would you touch on that?
Yes, and we're trying to highlight that benefit to, uh, to let our employees know that, um, that, that is an option as well as emergency, uh, uh, the emergency care, uh, after-hours care is an option as opposed to the emergency room. We've been trying to do a little bit more education as far as that, uh, the live health, live health online is concerned. We have a Benefits Expo that will be coming up, uh, in June, and we'll make sure that we highlight that benefit as well. Uh, we did some, um, some, uh, campaigns surrounding that, uh, live health online. And, uh, it, it, it caught on somewhat, but, uh, with that benefit, it's just something that we have to continuously, uh, to promote to our employees. So, uh, so we'll make sure that we continue in that effort. And again, I say that we have a Benefits Expo that will be coming up in June, and we'll make sure that we highlight that benefit.
Okay, and to, and to reemphasize, this, uh, live health online, you're actually, you're, you're actually meeting with, with the doctor.
There's an app that you have to download on your smartphone, and, uh, you can actually, you will actually do a, if you're familiar with FaceTime, you will do a FaceTime with a doctor. So, you will log into that, uh, appli, application. Application will let you know what doctors are available, and, uh, you will select one of those, and, uh, the doctor comes on, and you begin to, uh, to proceed with a, uh, a one-on-one meeting with that doctor.
You can actually select a specific doctor?
Yes, sir.
If, if need be. That's, uh, oh, and a reduced deductible, a smaller deductible with the online.
Yep.
Is it $10 from that?
It is.
$10, $15?
It's $15 if I'm not mistaken, yes, sir.
So, it's, it's a great tool for employees, and we're working on ways to, to promote that. I think I'm gonna give it a try next time. Let me see, uh, I think that about covers it. Jennifer, do you have anything you wanted to add, because you're on Saturday meeting?
Now, I think, you know, what you pointed out was the good points, uh, FaceTime and the doctor, and it will let you know the wait times.
Absolutely.
If you choose any doctor, it'll let you know how long you have to wait. And it's been very well received, it's just we need to get the usage up. The people that used it had no complaints.
Absolutely. So, uh, so we might have to get some testimonials from our employees who've utilized it, just to put it out there. So, employees, if they see that some of their colleagues are utilizing their app to, uh, to utilize that benefit as well.
Okay, if you'll stay up there, I'm gonna ask Jennifer to step up to the podium, so we're on camera and on mic, uh, because the, both of these, uh, folks are on our, our Pension Committee. And, uh, a lot of news all the time on, about pensions, uh, nationally, and the debt that's being, uh, attributed to pension. Part of it is, I say a large part of it is real, a large part of it is also how you have to report, uh, your pension liability. And so, what we did in our last meeting, we had the, um, GetCor, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, came in with their actuary, I think from St. Louis, if I recall correctly, and kinda gave us a health checkup on our program. Uh, yes, we have significant liability, as most jurisdictions do, and most companies do. And, uh, the, uh, I guess I'm gonna ask Jennifer to kinda touch on the accounting aspects at a very, at a very high level and what's changed over the last couple of years in terms of, uh, pension liability.
Sure. Um, GASB, uh, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, has, uh, created different, um, requirements that we have to report or use different assumptions that we have used in the past, or the actuaries have to use, or actuaries have to use different actuarial assumptions. Uh, and that has caused, um, a greater contribution, uh, to the plan that we experienced last year. The, uh, different mortality or, you know, mortality tables had to be used, um, and different assumptions regarding the interest rate. And you wouldn't think a quarter of a percent of interest rate would matter that much, but when you go from assuming a seven and a half percent interest rate down to a seven and a quarter, you know, because of the way the market, they try to smooth everything out, um, it does impact the contribution, um, and the liability on the books. And that's nationwide, it's not just pertains to Douglas County, it doesn't just pertain to Georgia, it pertains to anybody that has a defined benefit plan, um, and has to go through these standards that's in the government entity. So, we have experienced that, um, we did see that ACCG, Commissioner Mitchell is on that Advisory Board. Um, they did decide that because they started seeing the trends of the, uh, funding levels go down because of these actuarial assumptions, it wasn't that counties or entities were not putting in enough money, it was just that the liabilities were growing, therefore...
Rule changed, yeah.
Yeah, the rule changed, therefore the funding ratios, uh, changed. But they did decide to go from an 80% funding level down to 75, and we're just around the 77% mark. Um, and probably they couldn't, they didn't wanna, um, promise anything, but they said because of the contribution that we made last year that they see that we're gonna, our contribution rate or our funding ratio is going to be, um, higher than what it was for, uh, last year.
Inadequate.
Inadequate, yes.
Yeah.
It's never been in jeopardy, let me make that very clear, that, you know, coming before y'all last year to ask for the additional increase, it wasn't because the pension plan was in jeopardy or anything, it was just we budgeted a certain amount based on prior trends, and because of all these rules that changed, it significantly impacted not just ours, but anybody that was in that plan or had a government plan, they saw an increase in their contribution, and so we just felt like it needed to be brought before the Board of Commissioners to amend the budget.
And, uh, Director Perry, I'll have you finish up, I was just about to comment on pensions. Delta Airlines was close on to, uh, in its bankruptcy, like all airlines did, disposing of their, of their pension, pension program because of, of IRS laws. And the fact that this, all this pension money, liability has been recognized, I think it, at that time, like in, within a short timeframe, like two or three years, which it really doesn't make a lot of sense. Likewise, our pension liability, because we're not paying that pension out in, in the next two or three years, but that's what airlines are required to do. And then so, through Congress, they extended that payout period, like, I think, seven... 17 years, which allowed a lot of airlines, Northwest and others, to maintain a pension rather than throwing it to the government, pennies on the dollar to be funded. So, so likewise, uh, we certainly have a, a pension issue, like practically all municipalities, counties do, uh, and states. Uh, but we're, we're going to continue to monitor it and going to the long-term financial viability. Uh, we're talking about the long-term capital funding and that sort of thing is something we're gonna have to develop a formula, uh, so that we reduce that, that pension liability. Uh, Fred, do you want to add anything?
Well, just gonna say that, that, uh, that meeting that we had, we're, we're gonna do that on an annual basis. We're gonna have Get Core to come in and just give us a, a checkup on our pension plan. Let us know where we are, let us know if any, uh, changes that are gonna be coming down the pipeline that'll affect our pension plan negatively or positively, and, uh, we'll be doing that on an annual basis. I do want to add that in, uh, as, this week, the 22nd, we'll have Get Core to come in, uh, they'll be in Citizens Hall, they'll be talking about our pension plans, just going over our pension plan.
Thank you.
And talking about, um, you know, how benefits are calculated, how they're distributed, and they'll be also talking about the offset that applies to Douglas County employees.
Okay, we're gonna get that word out, or have already got that word?
We have been sending emails out as well.
Okay, very good.
Yes.
Thank you both for the day and for your service on these committees.
Thank you, please.
Now, the, uh, Public Safety Board, I'm gonna call on, uh, Madam Chair to pitch in.
Okay.
Because she's also, also on the committee. What, what the county has established is basically a, uh, uh, I guess, uh, stakeholders in the interest of public safety, the, the city, Fire EMS, the Sheriff's Office, uh, some other entities in, uh, transportation, uh, as, as required, communications, uh, as required in that regard. Uh, that's the first thing that's happened. It's important that we, we're putting all these entities in the room at the same time to discuss public safety issues. Uh, we reviewed our, our existing ordinances relates to public safety, and have found no deficiencies there. We feel like they're, it's adequate as is. Um, we also discussed the 911, uh, funding, and that's, that's up before the State House right now, what the implications are there for, for public safety. I think the biggest thing that's on, on most people's minds, at least currently, is, uh, the school shootings. And specifically, what we can do to be proactive in training our, not just our law enforcement, first responder staff, uh, but also the school system. So this, uh, our, our membership in this board is going to be reaching out, interfacing, and, uh, having some exercises with the school system, uh, to proactively train, uh, school staff in particular, uh, on how to handle these kinds of situations. Uh, Madam Chair, anything that you'd like to add to that, uh, public safety aspect?
Yeah, I just want to quickly add that we are, our, our primary goal is to take advantage of the opportunities that are out there to improve our, um, public safety, such as active shooter, mass casualties, uh, has, has met. So we have several, several components. I believe that our group, that we compose is very talented, and they have the ability and the, the knowledge and expertise to, to pull a plan together. We're also working with the city and also Major Holmes is, uh, representing the Sheriff Department, and he's actually approached me about this committee, and I thought that it would be a great idea, particularly what's going on with the school shooting. And then also, we want to make sure that we're aligned with our public school system to make sure that, uh, this meet, uh, committee is very productive. But with that, with no further ado, I'll ask you, if you could, Major Holmes, just add to what we're doing and what you already, uh, established with the school system thus far.
Yeah, we have had, um, a couple of meetings since we last met with the Public Safety Committee about getting the participation. We're gonna have a meeting, uh, tomorrow, a committee meeting, that we'll probably have the location, or have the, it's not the date, the week of it, um, and trying to see how many volunteers we can get to do this. Um, the Sheriff's Office historically, for the last three years that I know of, have done, uh, preventive active shooter training. We do it with our S R Os every year. When they have the ability, when it's the summertime or when it's a holiday, they try to do something. Well, a few years ago, there was a, a training that went on at Iguizan High School. This is what we're wanting to do this summer, is one of a magnitude that's gonna include us, the City Police Department, the Fire Department, the hospital, um, and the school system, emergency management, um, to include a mass casualty type scenario. That's why we're gonna need volunteers. Um, and, uh, I should know more by the end of this week about the dates and times of that. Um, and, uh, I, I know that it's probably gonna be in the week of July, probably middle to latter part of July, when the, uh, S R Os already have a week scheduled for training. We're gonna pick one of those days to do this operation. So, um, we're, I hope to know more by the end of the week on that. Be some more finalized, and I'll let y'all know as soon as I do.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Our next committee update is Commissioner Guy on Fire and EMS.
Uh, thank you, ma'am, and I'm going to yield to, uh, Chief Deputy, Scott Zackner.
Thank you. Um, we've met three times since the last update. As a result of the meetings, we had five recommendations. The first one was, uh, to award extreme images, the, the bid for installation of signage for the stations and the wrap for the fire safety house. The next one was, uh, the remaining balance of the 2002 S P L O S fund to put it all together so that we can finish our metal building at the fire training complex. Um, recommend, next one was to purchase an additional station logo for our Winston Station. Because of the roundabout and the construction, we're actually gonna be turning around and going through the bays the other way to the outside, so we need to sign for each side of the station. So we had to, uh, amend that. Um, the three ones that I talked to today, uh, about the target solutions, uh, the turnout gear, and the A V Ls for the fire trucks, that was a recommendation. And then, uh, another one was to provide the Fire Department with eight additional positions for manpower on our ladder trucks, um, uh, to help bring down overtime costs. Pending review of the Commissioners. And then the S P L O S equipment, the S P L O S equipment that we bought in '17, uh, of course, the ladder truck, the ambulance, um, we've taken deliveries on both of those. The ladder trucks are actually in service. Uh, we're waiting on some more pieces for the ambulance. Um, the pumper is scheduled to be delivered sometime this week. And then we've talked about the radio system. Uh, the bids were actually awarded to Motorola and the work that's been done on it. And that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Guy?
Yes, uh, I just want to elaborate a little bit about the, uh, recommendations for the eight, uh, new positions. Each year, for many years, uh, as the county has grown, there's always been requests for additional staff and different, additional staffing. And usually, those are the first things cut, is additional staffing. And so we've really gotten behind.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in the neighborhood, I, I think y'all's recommendation was 40 new people.
Yes, ma'am.
And there's no way we can do that.
No, we understand that.
So we've got to have a plan, uh, out there to replace, uh, I mean, to fill, uh, the gaps. Oftentimes, um, we may have to shut a truck down because of, uh, not enough staffing, and we, we want to at least get ladder trucks, uh, staffed where they have, uh, is it three?
Yes, ma'am.
Two or three, okay.
Three.
We went back and forth. But, uh, this is just, uh, the first step. And we just need to grow the county and to fill the positions. The overtime amounts to about a million dollars a year.
Yeah, almost a million dollars a year.
And so that will give us, uh, these eight.
Eighteen, yes.
Uh, so, uh, we're hoping that it will. Uh, it may not do it all right, uh, County Committee.
No.
Well, as far as the eight people, I think it was about half of it.
About half of it, yeah.
Yes.
But it will be offset by the overtime.
Yes, according to Fire Chief, yes, it will be.
Okay. So I just wanted to kind of elaborate on that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Chief Deputy, if you can? Okay. Any other questions, please? All right. Last but not least, we need to have the safety update and, well, I am the appointee from the Board of Commissioners, but I will yield to our Director, LaBarn. Good night, LaBarn, if you'd be safe. And we'll bond to what we've been doing.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning.
Madam Chairman, um, the, um, the Safety Board has met, um, on a monthly basis, uh, every month, with, uh, the exception of this past January, where we were unable to meet due to not having a forum. Um, our, and, um, two of us, uh, or three, two out of three of the investigators were, uh, out in the field that day and, uh, unable to make it to the meetings. Um, with that being said, the, um, the Safety Board has continued to work on the safety manual, which I'm pleased to announce that as of this, uh, past Friday, it was sent to the printer for a proof copy, which is a final copy, uh, with, um, edits from 18 different departments that were submitted, along with a Galley copy. Uh, so we're really happy about having this brought to that next stage, and we'll have those available, uh, sometime next week. But unfortunately, it'll, um, next week is also the next Safety Board meeting, so it'll be, uh, after this coming meeting when we are able to get them to them. Pardon me. Um, we have also, um, I'm getting over something with my throat, so excuse me, it's scratched. Um, we have also been working on, uh, redoing, um, ways that, in which we present, uh, to the Safety Board. At present, it's pretty paper-heavy, uh, so we are, are trying to streamline that with some technology. Uh, we are also working on the Risk and Safety's webpage, and I will be bringing some ideas of ways that we can continue to provide superior services, uh, both as a support department, um, to internal departments, as well as our external customers. Um, we have also discussed a R M I S system, Risk Management Information Systems, uh, to include all the forms and all the advantages of moving, uh, claims management and all that we do onto one platform. Um, we will be having a presentation, some understanding, this Tuesday, um, on cleats. Uh, there are attachable cleats that hikers use that can prevent slips and falls during ice and snowstorms. Um, it's just something that an employee will be presenting to us, and we'll see what the, um, the Safety Board has to think about. Um, those attachable cleat for those unique situations, but there are some risks that come in, that come along with them. Um, and lastly, um, we have also been working on, um, I've been putting together a waiver, planning on speaking to the Safety Board tomorrow about it. It is something, uh, it's a waiver for using, helping people unlock car doors or help them, uh, or for, um, uh, jump-starting vehicles. Um, and it's my understanding that Parks and Recreation is getting into, uh, assisting people with jump-starting those vehicles. And Risk and Safety has worked with Fleet Management to put together a safety class where, uh, employees have been trained to do that. Uh, in the past, the Sheriff's Department had used a tangible waiver form, um, to reduce, uh, um, as a risk reduction technique to reduce our liability when assisting those out in the field, uh, or our customers, I should say. Um, the same goes for jump-starting vehicles or, um, helping them unlock them. Um, but at present, shape of the Sheriff's Department is using, uh, their body cameras to do it verbally, to gather, uh, that authorization. So, um, we're just trying to help Parks and Rec with, uh, with that waiver and, uh, any other department that assists our external customers with those needs.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Director Perry. All right. With that being said, are there any other questions in service from the Board of Commissioners? At this time, according to our, maybe executive session.
We have one matter under Personnel for executive session, Madam Chair. It'll take a few minutes.
Okay. Uh, we have one matter for executive session. At this time, we, we have a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion, and second, all these things, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that being said, motion is approved. I'll take a ten-minute break and then go to the back end of the room.
Yeah, not a minute.
Thank you all again. Um, the executive session is ended, and we're back. Any other comments or questions from the Board of Commissioners, or from our, our legislators?
Madam Chair, uh, one of the issues has come up, uh, from a structural standpoint is the, uh, when Judge Deffrey's retirement from State Court, he had a law clerk there that shared duty with Judge Barker, who's now the chief, uh, State Court Judge, that is leaving, going to private practice. And in noting as they fulfill that job, that job historically has only been handled by one person. She had a law degree and not yet, and she first started part-time for the county, passed the bar. We recommend from Labor Department at the judge's request, that the position be modified, it still will be called a law clerk, but it'll have a requirement that you graduate from accredited law school and that you pass successfully the Georgia State Bar and are a member and good standing with the Georgia State Bar. So we would ask y'all, as part of new business tomorrow, to consider a modification in the structure of that position as we consider a replacement tomorrow recommended by State Court Judge. And amend the budget accordingly.
Okay.
So those, those will be a dual item as new business, and I will get with Ms. Watson to make sure it's on the agenda properly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Or you?
You get with that, Judge Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know, I, I do, my only concern is that, uh, there's been some, we just don't want to call it something that would confuse whether they work here or work for y'all.
I don't think it matters what it's called, it's just what.
As long as it gets filed right.
And the, and the responsibility right.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll see that tomorrow, or what that looks like, right?
It'll be a new business tomorrow.
New business.
Can we, how, how long would it take us to get that, though?
The job description.
Yes.
We, we have worked extensively with S A V I F A, so we have that. Uh, the updated job description, we made all the necessary adjustments to it. We're just gonna make that, uh, that change with the title, and then, uh, then we can email it out to Commissioners.
Can we get that prior to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. We're gonna go down, make that change, and email it out.
And Judge Barker, have you seen the proposed change, other than the title?
Yes, yes.
And you're okay with it?
Yes, okay. We've done it.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns or comments from the Board of Commissioners? And with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.